Chair Freeman. Vice Sherried has already informed us he would be absent. Commissioner Brassfield, I do not see, so I'll make mark him absent as well. If he shows up during the meeting, I will add the time as best as I can. Commissioner Dawson also has let us know he's going to be absent. Commissioner Fletcher. You're remotely. Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
And Commissioner Millich. Commissioner Millich, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Thanks for confirming that you're here. We do have a quorum of four commissioners today. First off present, we have Community Development Director Cole, Associate Planner Sabdo and myself, Recording Secretary Cleary. Shall I take this time to announce to viewers at home how they can join to provide public comment?
Sure, we're going to do the consent agenda for the consent of the meeting.
Mic on Sandy?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing Sandy.
Should be green.
My green mic is now.
There you are.
Okay, thank you.
We have one consent agenda item, and that's the minutes from May the 10th. And yes, Jennifer, why don't you announce how people can comment?
Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you lives with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free. Once again, to join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864. Then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is 1619908039. If the first phone number doesn't work, there are more listed on the meeting agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeeting. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of their hands raised. There is a three-minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit.
Thank you, Jennifer. Are there any comments on the minutes for May the 10th?
I'll make a motion to approve the May 10th, 2022 minutes.
Good.
Well, second.
All right, a motion and a second has been made to approve the May 10th minutes. Is there any comment on the motion? With no comment on the motion, let's call for the vote.
Chair Freeman?
Approve.
Commissioner Brassfield is absent. Commissioner Dawson is also absent. Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Millich?
Yes.
And Vice Sherried is also absent. These minutes are approved as submitted with a vote of four.
I have a question. I wasn't here. Do I get to vote or?
Yes, you can vote on the minutes.
All right, moving on to the next item, this, let's open public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And I think we've heard Jennifer tell us how we can call in and comment. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to comment on items not on the agenda?
That are also within the discretion or the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. We tend to forget that because sometimes we get people who get up and want to address us on something that's very important to them, but unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about it.
Right, because it's not in the purview of the Planning Commission. It's good to remember. Anyone calling in, Jennifer?
I do see one attendee in the meeting. Their hand is not ready. So I don't think they want to comment.
On this one, okay. All right, then let's move on to our first and our only public appearance item, and that's item number three on the schedule. Consider 246 Anita Street and 251 Clay Street, minor subdivision SD 210159 of a 7,200 square foot parcel into two separate parcels. The applicant and owner is Dorothy E. Massey. The district is R36 zoning district, medium density residential general plan designation exempt from SEQA Article 19, Section 15, 315, Class 5. And we will begin with a staff report from Christie.
Thank you, Chair Freeman and Commissioners. I'm Christie Sabado, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. I'm Dottie Maisie. The applicant is proposing a minor subdivision of a 7,200 square foot parcel into two separate parcels at 246 Anita Street and 251 Clay Street. The project is located between Clay Street and Anita Street. There's a house facing Anita and a house facing Clay Street. The general plan designation is medium density residential. The zoning is R3, and the property is located in the Old Town neighborhood. So there is a house facing Clay Street. It's a 1,035 square foot house, and there's also a 274 square foot garage. Along Anita Street, there's an existing 755 square foot house and a 305 square foot garage. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into two parcels. You'll see the proposed new lot line in between them is in red. And the reason for the irregular proposed lot line is so that each of the parcels meets the R3 setback standards. And the way it is laid out as proposed, it does meet those R3 standards. So that is why the line doesn't just go straight down. So this is showing that the existing parcel size is 7,200 square feet. The R3 district allows a minimum lot size of 3,500 square feet. That's a substandard lot size. And the proposed parcel size of 251 Clay Street parcel would be 3,700. And the proposed parcel size at 246 Anita. So the Monterey City Code states that the Minor Subdivision Committee has the authority to recommend a decision to the Planning Commission regarding minor subdivisions. On May 19th, 2022, the Minor Subdivision Committee unanimously recommended denial of the proposed minor subdivision. The code also states that the Planning Commission shall review subdivisions where substandard lots less than 5,000 square feet are being considered. And that's why this application is before you today. So the proposed minor subdivision is consistent with the general plan land use designation. The medium density residential general plan land use designation, the average density would be from eight to 30 drilling units per acre. This proposal results in a density less than that, so it'd be approximately one acre. The project is located in the Old Town neighborhood. The Old Town area plan does have a program that states subdivisions of lots into smaller lots is discouraged. Discourage substandard lot subdivisions. It states preserve large and small single-family houses located on more than one lot of record or large assessor's parcel to maintain the mix of large and small lots in the area. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the R3 standards. As outlined in your packet, the staff has done a thorough analysis of all the R3 standards and how the application meets those standards. Let us know if you have any questions. The Monterey City Code includes findings that the Planning Commission should make to approve subdivision. And that includes, there's A, B, C, D, and E here. And it's written in the negative, so just be aware of that. It states that the Planning Commission shall deny approval of a tentative or final map if it makes any of the following findings. The first one is that the design or improvement of the proposed subdivision is not consistent with the objectives, policies, general land uses, and programs of the city's adopted general plan and applicable specific plans. B, that the site is not physically suitable for either the type or density of the proposed development. C, that the design or improvements of the proposed subdivision are likely to cause substantial environmental damage or substantially and avoidably injure fish or wildlife or their habitat. D, that the design of the subdivision or the type of improvements is likely to cause serious public health problems. And E, that the design of the subdivision or the type of improvements will conflict with easements acquired by the public at large for access through or use of property within the proposed subdivision. So in review of the findings, the proposed minor subdivision does not meet or is consistent with B, finding B2 and E6. So that would mean in this case that the findings B through E would not give reason for the Planning Commission to deny this. However, the minor subdivision, I'm sorry, yeah, the proposed minor subdivision is, it meets finding A in that it is not consistent with the adopted Old Town neighborhood plan. The Planning Commission should deny approval of tentative or final map or a final map if it makes or meets any of the following findings. So it does meet finding one in that not consistent with the Old Town area plan. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolution to deny the proposed minor subdivision of a 7,200 square foot parcel located at 246 Anita Street and 251 Clay Street. Thank you. Staff is available for questions, and the applicant, Dottie Maisie, is here to say something afterwards.
Just a quick clarification question because the thing is written in the negative. Are you proposing denial on the basis of two, three, four, and five, but not one?
No, denial because it does, because it meets finding A, though it's not consistent with the Old Town area plan. So as it's read, the Planning Commission shall deny approval of a tentative or final map if it makes or meets any of the following findings, though it meets or makes finding A.
And that's the basis upon which the denial is based, where all these other ones?
Exactly.
Okay. Questions for Christie?
I have a question.
Okay.
Christie, the Minor Subdivision Committee that has referred this to us, who makes up that committee?
It is made up of somebody from Public Works and Tom Hardy, Senior Engineer was in attendance, and so was Haunton Reed. So it's typically a Planning Commission member and a staff member from Public Works.
Okay, and then one other thing, could you show me on the map of where the sewer easement is? I couldn't figure that out. Oh, there. Okay, great. Thank you.
Welcome.
I have a question.
Okay.
Christie, what was the basis of the decision? Do we have a decision of the Minor Subdivision Committee? It's, see, we're here to determine whether they made an error, whether they were wrong in what they did. So we need to know why they did what they did in denying it to determine whether or not they were correct. So without their decision, we have no way of knowing. What is the basis of that?
The Minor Subdivision Committee agreed with staff's report. And the main point of that was that the Minor Subdivision Committee, the only thing it's not consistent with is the Old Town area plan. And I have it highlighted here, the particular section that it's not consistent with.
Okay, fine, thank you. But it's very important that when we get these appeals from decisions of other city groups or governmental groups that we know the basis. So just so you know why we need to know that, because we have to determine whether they made a mistake or not.
Okay, so I do need to provide one point of, you make a good point, Commissioner Millich, but this was a referral from the Minor Subdivision Committee to the Planning Commission. And the basis of their, they couldn't have made a decision on the project anyways because of that municipal code requirement that requires any subdivision less than 5,000 square feet. But I think it's a good point. We should attach the minutes for their decisions, or if not for their decision, for their recommendation to the commission next time.
Thank you, Kim.
And, and so just to take Steve's point one further, actual sentence is subdivision of larger lots into smaller lots is discouraged. Discourage substandard lot subdivisions. This is the basis for the denial.
Correct. And it's listed as a program, not a guideline or a goal.
Okay.
That's why staff interpreted it that way.
All right. Harry?
Yes, thanks, Christie. We had a presentation by planning staff last year about SB9, which actually deals with, as far as I can tell, this type of situation.
Sure.
I believe SB9 is now law. Can you discuss this application and why SB9 doesn't apply?
Sure. So we did look into that, and SB9 applies to single-family zoned areas. This is zoned R3, which is multifamily residential, so it doesn't apply to SB9.
Okay, so the language of SB9 talks about R1 zoning, not R3.
Single family, and that R1 is single family and city.
Okay. I guess my other question is the the language of the old Monterey, you know, plan uses the word discourage. And when we, when the Planning Commission and the city councils works on the language of ordinances, we pay a lot of attention to the shoulds and shalls and discourage and all that stuff. To, so it's that, that distinction between discourage and, you know, like if it was a prohibition, I would have thought the, the Old Town area plan would have said prohibited. So can you discuss that?
Versus discouraged.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's up for interpretation. That's a good point. We haven't heard from the Old Town Neighborhood Association. We did forward this report to them. So I think it's up for interpretation by the Planning Commission.
Right, but the, the Minor Subcommittee, Minor Subdivision Committee actually looked into this, you know, they discussed the language of that discouraged.
They did.
And what did they come up with? That that?
They agreed with the interpretation.
Okay, so it started with a staff interpretation, and then they agreed with the staff.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Dan?
All my questions were answered. Thank you.
Okay. I am intrigued by the way the proposed lot line has been constructed, because it does seem that there are simpler ways of doing this that would provide slightly more than 3,500 square feet on each one of the properties, particularly in looking at numbers one, two, three, and four. That's a little squirrely to me, but I'm sure it has to do with setback and front setback, et cetera. But it does seem a little squirrely to me.
A lot of revisions took place in order for this proposal to meet the R3 standards, so.
I guess I'd like to make one just supplemental comment. The Minor Subdivision Committee actually looked at two alternatives. One was this one with the jagged line that meets setback requirements and minimum lot size. The other option was a straight line. That straight line version required a variance. And the challenge or the question to the applicant as we came forward, the variance based on the SEQA exemptions, we prepared an initial study for the second option to be considered by the Planning Commission, which comes with it a project cost. And so I know the project, Christie asked the applicant, and their decision was, you know, not to pursue that, a preparation of that initial study. So that second alternative wasn't brought forward to the Planning Commission because you can't make a decision without that initial study. So we did want to sort of get a read from the Minor Subdivision Committee. If they were, if they were leaning towards thinking that the findings for a variance could be made, then it might be worth it for the applicant to spend that extra money for, and time for preparation of an initial study. I think at a minimum, it's $4,000. And so it is a substantial price to any applicant, so. To your question about the jagged lock, we all along, in fact, I think the applicant's first proposal was to to have a straight line, which created, it was a variance for the setbacks or demolition of part of the existing structure, which wasn't really, you know, desired by the applicant. And was there a substandard lot as well?
I think it was the lot size as well.
The lot size was substandard because they wanted to keep the houses intact, so. So I do, I just want to explain that to you. There were a couple alternatives explored at Minor Subdivision, but only one brought forward based on the state requirement for SEQA analysis.
All right.
It just seems like this approach is asking for problems down the road when these two parcels are owned by separate people.
Yeah, I agree with that. At this point, thank you, Christie. Would the applicant like to say something? Okay. Introduce yourself if you would.
I sure will. I'm Dorothy Massey. I'm the applicant and the owner of the property in question. And I wanted to share first a little bit about the reason I'm pursuing this. I do own these as investment properties, and they're both rentals. And one of the families has been on the Clay Street side for about five years now, and they've brought their first baby home to this residence. And they're really pushing me and asking me if they could please purchase this residence. And so that was what initially got me started on pursuing this. What of all the wax? And, and then I just had a kind of a statement I wanted to make. You are all so well aware of this, but it's just the comments I wanted to make about the neighborhood. The, the proposed lots will be smaller than the existing lot is now. But I'm speaking to the fact that it's discouraged. It's not prohibited. It's discouraged. But the two new lots will be twice as large as many surrounding parcels, some of which are 1,800 square feet. While subdivision of larger lots into smaller lots and substandard lot subdivisions are discouraged by the plan, they are not prohibited. This minor subdivision will serve to enhance the existing setting and character of the neighborhood by creating two single-family properties. Each property will be more affordable to the average family. When a family can own their own home, it instills pride of ownership. Owner-occupied properties are typically better maintained by their owners and cared for in a fashion with the objectives of the area plan, creating neighborhood stability and increasing property values in the neighborhood, which in turn results in higher tax revenues. As the property is currently recorded, it is unaffordable for the average family and will continue to be held as an investment property leased to non-permanent residents. Upon review, excuse me, upon review, I hope that you will agree with me that this minor subdivision isn't. Upon review, excuse me, upon review, I hope that you will agree with me that this minor subdivision is an exception and is consistent with the neighborhood. That's all I wanted to share.
I have a question. May I call you Dorothy?
Please, or Dottie.
Dottie. What separates the two properties now? Is it a fence?
There's a fence, uh, yeah, there's a fence between the property.
If you've, if the planning commission were to encourage separation of the two properties into two single family residences in an R three zone, that does open up, uh, the SB nine thing that you mentioned. But would you be willing to spend the $4,000 for the second
Absolutely.
iteration of the lot line adjustment?
Yes.
Because as Dan said, a lot line adjustment like this, every single turn in, in the property line is a point of trouble.
Absolutely. I, I, I agree with you. I do agree with you. And you are, that is exactly what I was wondering if it's worth proceeding. The substandard lot is going to be 3,064 feet if we, and then there's the need for a variance for the setback because there's only 20 feet between the houses. And we need 24, 28.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So intriguing. Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Any other questions for Dottie? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Let's open this up to public comment. And if there are members of the public who would like to comment on this or ask questions, now is the time to call in. I don't see anybody else here.
I don't see any attendees currently in the meeting, but just for those who want to join, you can join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone by using the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll free. Once again, that phone number to call is 833-568-8864. There are more listed on the meeting agenda at isearchmonterey if that one does not work for you. You will need the webinar ID 1619908039. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is 1619908039. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. And I see no more attendees in the meeting.
Okay. All right, if there are no public comments, let's bring it back to open commission and committee comments.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Um, I'm looking at that site plan. Can you pull that site plan up again, please? So I'm assuming, if you could verify for me, that the green dash line represents the side yard setbacks and the front and front yard setbacks as if this was one parcel. Is that correct?
The dash, the black dash line around the front.
Well, I know that, but I'm, I'm looking at a different site plan. It's not colored. It's on packet page 11.
Agenda packing. You can pull up the agenda packet on iSearch.
It looks like the front setback is based on Anita Street. If you look at that green line.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, so I have a question just in general. When you have a, a, a street to street lot like this, how do you determine what is the front yard setback and the rear yard setback if there were no houses on this parcel?
So this is a double lot, so both Anita and.
You're muffled.
Um, it's a double fronting lot, so you take the front yard setback from both streets, from Anita and Clay.
Okay. And then if you were to subdivide this as it's shown with the jagged turns and twists and whatnot, how do you determine setbacks and, you know, what's, what's actually left over to build it if those houses weren't there?
So you, and the reason for the jagged line is in order to meet the rear yard setbacks. So the setbacks from the existing structures.
And what is that rear yard setback?
Um, let's see it. Just going to refer to my staff report here. Uh, the Clay Street parcel, the rear yard setback, uh, required setback is 10 feet. And oh, sorry. Clay Street, it's 14 feet and Anita, it's 10 feet.
Okay. And then, um, one last question. Are there any examples of situation like this in this neighborhood?
Situations like this in terms of type of minor subdivision.
Yeah, the smaller sized lot.
Um, perhaps, I haven't been here as long. Maybe Kim could answer that.
I don't remember processing any minor subdivisions like this. If you're asking what's the average lot size in the neighborhood? Is that your question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feel for this, actually.
So, um, Kristy could bring up our GIS map while we're fielding other questions and we quickly show you at least the surrounding blocks and the lot configurations.
Thank you.
The, the thing that Dottie mentioned that there was 20 feet between the two buildings at a certain point. And if you go to number three and number four on the survey.
I see that.
And number three and number four, just between them is a measurement that's 24.5 feet. So you've got the back of the house on Anita Street. And it doesn't quite line up to 24.5 feet to the back of the house on Clay Street. But it looks as though 20 feet would separate the two backs, giving them each a 10 foot rear setback.
So just to make this more complicated, the, the numbers you're looking at three and four, there's also a side yard setback from the porch off of 251 Clay Street. So there was also the way it, so it was, it's, it's a crazy lot line to try to meet that side yard setback as well there.
Sure, I see it right there, the 10 feet. It's so unusual to me, and tell me, I have got this wrong, to have a street to street double homed lot where each home is facing the street, a different street, like they're back to back. And so a lot of those houses in Spaghetti Hill, there's a flag driveway with a front house and an apartment behind, but they all enter from the same street. But this one is unusual because they've got the front of the house on two different streets. I can see why you want to do this.
So Kristy, I don't know if you, it's difficult to see here, but the lot lines are actually, maybe you can click on the lot line, you know, click on the parcels immediately adjacent, so you can, if, yeah, if you hit the click, yeah, there you go.
If you click on that table icon, it'll make it the.
Those are lot lines.
Correct.
Okay.
The lot size here is 1,920 square feet.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful.
And to extend Dan Fletcher's question further, are the rest of these houses that are each facing Clay versus Anita, are they all uh, unique properties or are they two houses on one own owner property?
Or are they R one or R three?
Let's see. They're all R three zoned, this whole part of lower, that's a better graphic.
Everything in orange is three.
So it's all R three, but there's a variety of lot sizes. And so you can see most of the lots seem to go through that district with the exception of there's a handful of lots actually adjacent to this property that are smaller. So.
So these two houses would go from in effect, R one to R one lots as opposed to one R three lot.
They would still be zoned R three.
I, I said in effect.
Dan Fletcher, do you want, I, I interrupted you.
No, no, I, I think it's helpful to know that right adjacent to this property are some smaller lots. Yeah, so yes, thank you. All my questions have been answered.
Steve?
Um, boy. I agree with Dan on the the zigzagging of the proposed split. And we would vote to appeal down on that, but were to come back to us on a for a variance and a lot of going down the middle, it would be much tougher, a much closer one, which much more difficult to call for me. I don't know. I, you know, we want to encourage uh, people to, uh, own their homes. And, uh, you know, you've got a starter home here. And, um, well, boy, it's obvious that it's not going to be a starter home if it's, there's still one parcel as opposed to two separate parcels, so. You know, in the spirit of ADU and all that, it, it, it's a much closer call for me, but this one, I, I really don't have a problem with because of the zigzagged shape of the proposed separation lot.
Uh, Steve, can you clarify that last sentence? You, you said you don't have a problem with the zigzag?
I said I do have a problem with the zigzags.
Okay, thanks.
Carrie.
Oh, yes, I, I also have a problem with the zigzag. It's, um, that's what's being brought before us is this very unusual property line proposal. And I don't, I just don't see how we can approve that. It's, it's just wild. I, I was, uh, I was thinking that if, if somebody came with a straight line, you know, I've seen lots of subdivisions where you have one jog to accommodate a setback, but this is taking it to the max for sure. But, um, i- if a variance was part of an application like this, I'm not sure what the finding would be for that. You know, that, because the, um, the, the findings that are required. So this is tough. And when you measure, I, I know the way we measure rear setbacks, it's sort of a, a linear kind of a measurement. But if you just go a little bit diagonal, you're ending up with property lines that are five, rear property lines that are five feet from the face of the building on Anita Street. So, um, I don't see how I can, uh, personally, uh, you know, it is my role in the planning commission support this application because of that. Because of the unusual configuration of the two lots. And because of the, um, it, it's sort of reinforced then by the, um, the Old Town, um, area plans, um, discouragement.
Well, I think we're dealing with some what ifs here. What if I presented a clean line down the middle to divide the lots? Well, that's not a question here. What we're being presented with is many twists and many turns. And I think that every one of these twists and turns is a future problem. What is interesting about the GIS map is that there are at least three properties that have clean splits and very small lots with single homes upon them. And while that's discouraged, it has been done. And so I'm inclined to vote to deny this application on the basis that, not that it doesn't meet, you know, number one or number A, that it's being, that the Old Town Plan discourages substandard lot subdivisions, but that this is an unworkable, uh, property line. And then if, you know, you choose to bring it back uh, with a clean break property line, then that's another set of circumstances where you're asking for a variance on a clean lot line. And it still doesn't meet number one, and it still is discouraged for substandard lots, but I think it's a cleaner proposal. Uh, that at least is my opinion. So I'm going to vote to deny.
I, I, I think I would agree with that. The way I look at this, whatever happens with this, uh, property line, proposed property line, I look at it as if those houses didn't exist because given their age and, and they're not going to be there forever. But what's going to be there for a very long time is the way these lots potentially are subdivided. And, and you know, that's how I'm looking at it. I, I just think all the jerry rigging of the line that we're looking at right now is just not acceptable. It's problematic.
It does seem somewhat unfair. I would go back to what Terry was saying that in a single, in an R one neighborhood, they wanted to put an ADU, they could easily put an ADU within 10 feet of uh, the back property line. But that isn't how this particular neighborhood is zoned, so I think you've got what you've got. Any other comments before we ask for a motion? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, sure, I'll make a motion. Adam, sure. So I move that we, um, deny the proposed minor subdivision proposal um, for 246 Anita Street and 251 Clay Street per the Minor Subdivision Committee's, uh, recommendation.
What findings?
With, with the findings as shown in the report.
There a second to this motion?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, so there's been a motion to deny approval of a tentative map as proposed based on the findings one, two, three, four, and five. Any comments on the motion? All right, let's call for the vote.
Chair Freeman?
Vote to deny. I guess, is that a yes?
So, yeah, so if you vote to deny, you agree with the motion. You support the motion if you would like
Okay, yes.
to vote for denial.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and Vice Chair Reed is absent, Commissioner Dawson is absent, and Commissioner Brassfield is absent. Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latessa?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This approval was denied. I'm sorry. It can be appealed to, um, the city council within the next 10 days with forms found available at the planning commission office, sorry, the planning office.
Thank you. Thank you for your application. Thank you. And good luck, right? All right, let's move on then to Planning Office update. Kimberly Cole.
Yeah, I have, um, some sad news to share. We, um, received notice on Friday that Mr. Van Eaton, our attorney for wireless, he was part of a team with Gail Crush. Mr. Van Eaton passed away on Friday evening unexpectedly. So that was. Um, so that was, we had spoken, I had personally spoken to him on Tuesday and Wednesday, so came as quite a shock. He's, I just want to acknowledge, um, his work and his accomplishments, and I think he sat through multiple, so I know he did, subcommittee meetings, and, um, it's very much a loss, so, um, I did speak with his partner who had, um, um, been with us as well through this whole process, Ms. Gail Koresh. Um, she will be taking up Joe's work and finishing it unexpectedly. And so with the change of events, um, we'll be recommending on June twenty-eighth to continue the public hearing on Wireless to August ninth. And we think we'll have, um, full consideration, um, for the planning commission on August ninth. I do want to let the commission know we did receive um, substantial new comments. And so one of the, we're actually going through all those comments, particularly from the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association. I think their comments, um, in the chart are well over thirty pages of comments, so we're working through all of those. If you want to see those in advance of the meeting, we've already posted them online, so you can go to the city website and start working through those. But that's, that's my news, so.
I'm sorry to hear about.
Me too.
So, the, um, so the, the July twenty-eighth planning commission hearing is, is likely canceled, but not yet.
Correct. Oh, well, the June twenty-eighth, we may just
June twenty.
and, and request it continued to a date certain.
Oh, so we're going to have the hearing anyway and?
We'll just open it, continue it. I, I, the public could comment if they want.
Right.
Um, because we continued it to a date certain, we like to hold that meeting and just explain to everybody if they were waiting for that date. And they would have the ability to make any public comment they would want.
Do we need a quorum for that? Kim?
Yes.
We will have to vote on whether to continue it.
What, what if we didn't meet? If we didn't meet, what would happen? It would just go to the next day?
Um, I would have to, well, we would have to renotice the item um, for the public hearing. So if it's not continued from a date certain to another date certain, we would, so it's, it's an administrative and a newspaper ad, which isn't that significant. There is a, um, and I'm forgetting, Commissioner Milich, you might remember as an attorney, our attorney has a specific word, like if we, if the commission, if we don't have a quorum, obviously we can't call the meeting to order.
Resuce.
Yeah, there's something I would have to ask Ms. Dobby, so I use the exact correct language, but, um, that's where we're at.
Put yourself in the shoes of the people who made thirty pages worth of comments. If you were a commenter, would you want to comment at a meeting that's not being held, or would you want them rolled over to August the ninth, whatever date that is?
So no matter what, the hearing will be opened on August ninth and all public comment will be accepted. And then when you close the public hearing, the public hearing will be closed.
Okay.
Um, because we'll be presenting to you possibly modifications based on public comments submitted, but, um, you know, if we, if we, anytime we open a meeting and an item's been continued to that, we open it for public comments. So I think you might have remembered, um, that happened several times on the Abbott Hotel project that was continued to date certain. We were just continuing it, but there was still pretty significant public comment, even though the commission didn't plan to take any action.
Kim, is the word adjourned what you're looking for?
I think that is it. That, I believe that's accurate.
So these people could end up making their comments two times.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if the commission chooses not to have a quorum, I think the word is we will adjourn the meeting to another. But I still think I have to renotice. But.
It seems like our preference would be just to, you know, cancel the June twenty-eighth meeting if possible, but whatever.
I can work with our city attorney and find the language of what that, if I get it right.
Okay.
It would be nice to, if the only item we have is taking, uh, in the, uh, or continuing the matter, it would be nice to find a way to do that without, uh, having a, a meeting, setting forth a meeting, you know, and then having to adjourn it because we didn't have a quorum.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Anything else? If there are no, um, I have a comment. Um, a couple of weeks ago, and now did the city council approve the electric bike uh, ordinance, uh, for level one, but not level two and three?
No, they actually, um, they held two public hearing item, uh, um, two public hearings on the item, and they added class two bikes. So they allow cla- the ordinance allows class one and class two bikes for, um, prohibits class three. They had a very interesting discussion, um, and they had us bring back more information, and, um, so they appreciated your dialogue. They continued that dialogue at the council level, so it was an interesting public hearing.
Do the police have only, uh, uh, one, level one bikes?
I don't know what type of bikes they ride.
Cause I asked one of the police officers in front of the, uh, post office, and he was on a bike, and I asked him what kind of bike. And he says it was a level one bike. And I was just wondering, I didn't ask him whether they had any level two or three bikes. But I would think they wouldn't have a level three, they'd have a motorcycle.
Exactly. Well, you know, the guy who's on the rec trail between eight and nine in the morning, I'm there three days a week. And he has, I am sure, a level three bike. It has great big huge tires, and he is not pedaling at all, and he more than twenty miles an hour. And I can't wait for the day. But they have to post the ordinance at the intersections for it to be something that he can be cited for, and that has not happened. And the CCTV, the camera flash, that does deter people. But posting it plus a camera flash that records people, I mean, I'm sure that our traffic engineer, chief of traffic engineering can work out something where vehicles over a certain speed.
I think we're getting signals through my dentures, sorry.
Anyway. Work in progress. Are there any other commissioner comments for today's meeting? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
I don't have dentures.
And it was such different voices.
Record.